The Town of Plainville. Established in 1721 at the geographical center of Connecticut.
Good evening, everybody. Welcome to our Town Council meeting. Tonight is June 19th, 7:00 PM. I would ask that you all stand for the pledge to be led by Councilwoman Cioto.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our
Thank you. Before we begin, we have to add an item to our agenda, so can I have a motion?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Motion to add Memorial Day essay winners to the agenda.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Great, well. Another fun evening for the Town Council. We love to have students come in and get recognized for all the wonderful things that they do and to have their families here to visit with us for a little bit. So with that, having said that, Councilwoman Saunders has a few items of business we have for a few students who won some awards, so want to carry on?
Sure. Zoe and Adriana will please come up. For those of you who are familiar with the Memorial Day Parade, we normally do this essay contest at the parade, after the parade, and this year because we had the unveiling of the Gold Star Monument, we were unable to do it. So I'm glad that you are able to be here tonight. And you each have a copy of your essay? Okay, great. These young ladies wrote some amazing essays about what Memorial Day means to them. And so whichever one of you wants to go first, just read nice and loud so people can hear you, okay?
Turn her a little more so she's facing the
Thank you.
Yeah, turn her that way so she can look into the camera.
That way you'll be on film.
You hear screaming, "Woo-hoo, three-day weekend." That is what most kids say after looking at their calendar, but have you ever wondered why you have the extra day off? Memorial Day is a time of remembrance. It is a day set aside to remember the men and women who gave their lives while serving our country during war. To truly understand the meaning of the day, you must know the history, how people celebrate it, and how it shows your patriotism. What do you think Memorial Day is? Memorial Day is a time where people all over America remember those who lost their lives to save us. I always thought Memorial Day was something else. Who has a parade for a three-day weekend? So I asked. I found out that it started as Decoration Day in 1868 after the Civil War. It was a day to celebrate the 620,000 soldiers who died in the Civil War. That is more deaths than World War I and II combined. General John A. Logan declared Monday, May 30th, as Decoration Day. Julia Williams explained how a woman visited a Confederate cemetery to place flowers on the graves of soldiers who had died in the Battle of Shiloh. This is how Decoration Day started. Legally, Decoration Day became Memorial Day in 1967 when President Johnson signed the legislation to change the name of the day. In 1971, it changed from May 30th to last Monday in May. Memorial Day was given its name because we are remembering those who fought for us. Memorial means a monument or a holiday reserved to remember a person or group of people and events. Next time you hear the words Memorial Day, take the time to think of the simple history that made this holiday for you. When you hear screaming down the street, there are screams of joy, not scared or upset screams. We won the war. You walk outside your barracks to watch what was happening and you find out your opponent surrenders. Many have died. They left knowing they were fighting for a change. The joy and sadness you feel right now is not replaceable. Those who died are commemorated. I know I celebrate this day particularly in remembrance of my Papa. He was a Marine. He was so committed to helping his country. This year, I am going to put flags on the graves of veterans in the cemetery. On Memorial Day, before I go to march in the parade, I put up three flags. One is a Browns' flag and one is an Indians' flag. Most importantly, the American flag. We fly it right in the center. This is called patriotism, and that is just one way to show it. Ann Wile explained how the children in the town go to parade every Memorial Day. This is a great way to celebrate. Most towns like Plainville have retired and active military marching. They also have active and retired firemen and policemen. They invite marching bands and town community service groups. I march with soccer. Patriotism is very important to those who we love. Memorial Day should not become a forgotten holiday. Children think of it as another day of no school, but not about the actual meaning. Knowing the history, how to celebrate it, and its connection to patriotism will make it more than just a three-day weekend. What do you do to celebrate it? Think about it, and maybe it will have you look further into the meaning of Memorial Day.
And Adriana Mills is a student at Toffelone, right?
Yes.
And she wrote a very nice essay as well. Go ahead and read yours.
What Memorial Day Means to Me by Adriana M. Mills. Memorial Day is the day we come together and remember the heroes who fought and gave their lives to protect our country. We thank those who served and did not come home and have since been laid to rest. My family and I are very fortunate to never have lost a family member to war. We do, however, have many family members who have fought and served for our country. We are very lucky to have them come back alive. This was at great cost. My great uncle Paul Maroon lost both his legs to a landmine explosion during the Vietnam War. My heart goes out to all those who have lost part of their family to war. I'm extremely grateful to have such brave men and women fighting to protect our freedom and who gave the ultimate sacrifice. I am very fortunate for what I have and that I live in the great USA. I would like for us all, for us to take a moment of silence. Thank you so very much for taking the time to honor these brave men and women. My inspiration to write the essay was my family. Every boy in my family ending with my grandpa Joe has gone to war. That was really inspired me to write the essay. Knowing that a majority of my family has fought to make our country the way it is today and gave me the motivation to write the essay. This was an optional assignment, so since I have the passion for writing, I wrote it. I felt strongly that the men and women who have fought for our country should be honored. When I came to school like it was a normal day during the morning announcements, I had found out that I had won. I felt so happy that my hard work and effort had paid off.
Again, these are elementary students, and we do this contest every year, so hopefully next year you hear from some other inspiring students, but thank you very much.
Thank you. Jog well done. Congratulations, girls. You were very mature and well-spoken, and I think you did a great job, and those were wonderful choices that the commission, the committee. Is there a committee that votes on these?
No, these are actually selected by their high school.
Teachers? Okay. Well, they picked the right ones. You did a wonderful job, and thank you for coming here tonight and sharing with us. It's very nice. You're welcome to stay for the rest of our meeting if you'd like. If you want to leave, that's okay, too. We can take a moment for you to go.
Thank you.
Okay. The next item on our agenda is a public hearing, and I will ask our town clerk to please read the notice for us.
Notice is hereby given that the Plainville Town Council will hold a public hearing at 7:00 PM on Monday, June 19th, 2017, in the municipal center to consider. Proposed ordinance entitled, Ordinance Establishing Fourth Quarter Transfers for the Fiscal Year Ending June 30th, 2017, and an Additional Appropriation of $574,570 from unassigned fund balance. Copies of said proposed ordinance and appropriations are available for public inspection in the office of the town clerk. Dated at Plainville, Connecticut, this 15th day of June.
Thank you. Before, Robert, we open up the public hearing, could you do a brief overview of what the council is doing, the accounts that are being transferred, and why we have to move these funds around at this time?
Sure. With regards to the transfers, the great majority of the transfers, most two-thirds of it, if not a little bit more, is simply moving monies that have been appropriated in the general fund to the debt management fund, so coming out of the debt service line item and going into the debt management fund, which is a separate fund. We do this on an annual basis, and that is in concert with the council's goal of maintaining a steady appropriation to the debt service account at approximately $4.7 million. So the debt service schedule is currently a little bit below that, and that difference is which transferred into the debt management fund so that when new debt is absorbed, we will be able to use that debt management fund to keep the debt management line item at a constant amount, that $4.7 million, and that's a credit that the council has been providing for the last probably three or four years now. The rest of it is monies that were previously put into the capital account that the council asked that we hold back as far as not doing those projects, and for ease of just accounting purposes, we're looking to take those dollars and transfer them into some of the line items that went over this year, which include, you know, some payouts to people who retired after long service to the community that had accrued some vacation time and sick payouts, sick day payouts, and some other costs along those lines. There were many line items that came in under, but rather than have a transfer from 25 items above to, you know, six items below, we thought these were higher dollar amounts, so we didn't have as many transfers. With regards to the unassigned fund balance, these are items that we've been talking about for quite some time in terms of the, you know, the cost of overtime, dealing specifically, you know, most part to the police department. And we also have monies in there for the landfill closure, which is something that we spoke about at our last council meeting, that these are things that were authorized in the past. We didn't put all the appropriations into those. Overall, as you will hear later, as part of our dashboard, you know, the overall fund balance as a result of the current fiscal year operations is expected to go down, you know, maybe in the $300,000 to $350,000 range, so it isn't, you know, it isn't going down by $575,000 because there are some savings on the expenditure side and on the revenue side, which you will see later on as part of the dashboard. This is a requirement that, we do these by ordinance and per the ordinance process, we have to have a public hearing. Interdepartmental transfers, excuse me, interdepartmental transfers from one department to another, according to the charter, we can only do in the last three months of the year, and that's why we're doing this here.
Okay. Thank you. All right. At this time, I will open up the public hearing to the public. I ask if anybody wishes to speak on the public hearing, please come to either podium, state your name and address. Does anybody wish to speak on the public hearing? Mr. Frankos?
Mr. Frankos, at Furbank Street. The only question I have is, and if the town manager could please repeat, I understand the overtime for the police roll away, you know, and everything else, but could you please explain again, the town capital, what's this extra transfer out for town capital? What exactly is that?
You're talking about transfer out at the top?
No, I'm looking at the appropriation, this. Transfer out.
The 147?
Yes, sir.
Rob, you want to take that round? If you don't mind, I'll let my planner do it.
We're going to call it Rob Burden, our finance director, to answer the question. Thanks, Rob.
Good evening. This 14707 is, it was budgeted as part of the fiscal year 2017 budget. We had total capital project expenditures between town and board, I believe, of $1,247. The general fund only contributed $1.1 million. The difference is this 147.
So it's funny that we had said we would come from the unassigned fund balance to support the fiscal year '17 capital improvement program, and this is the vehicle to put the money in there to cover those expenses.
Correct. And just another, this one should be really easy. The last one, the landfill. What project is that? I just don't know.
This is the closing of the landfill?
I'm not familiar with it.
We're under stewardship permit with the state of Connecticut to close landfill for a period, over a period of time, if we have to go through a process. We expect that we're going to be getting revenue at some point in time when we bring material into landfill to close it, which will more than cover the cost of what is, of the engineering that we have to do.
Thank you.
And if you want to see me, you know, during the day, we can go over it in more detail.
This is, yes, thank you.
Anybody else wish to speak to the public hearing? Anybody else wish to speak? Last time. Okay, I'll close the public hearing. Thank you for your comments. Moving on. I need approval of the minutes of our previous meeting. We have a motion?
Madam Chair?
Okay, in a second.
Second.
Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? Not? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Announcements and reports? Does anybody have any?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I attended the June meetings of both the Conservation Commission and the Committee on Aging. The Conservation Commission was last week. They are finishing up their distribution of the Project Peep seeds. That was spearheaded by the vice chair, Roberta Loria, who's in the audience, I noticed, tonight. And they addressed a few other things. They were wrapping up the fiscal year and also beginning some discussion of some possible smaller-scale ideas for Pateroski Pond and addressing some of the matters there. And they don't meet in July, but they will be meeting again in August. And at the Committee on Aging in June, they continue to review accomplishments and objectives. They do not meet during the summer, but the center itself certainly remains a very, very busy place with lots of programs and activities over the summer.
Yeah? Great. Does anybody else have anything?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I just want to really quickly thank everybody who supported Wings and Wheels, the town manager works very hard on that event, as well as we have a lot of town staff that volunteers their time, the Bristol Auto Club, Interstate Aviation, and the Wings and Wheels Committee, as well as the Plainville Police Department, who really helped us out quite a bit. And without the Plainville Fire Company, we would raise a lot less money for these two charities that we work so hard for, so I just want to make sure I thank all of you.
Anybody else have anything? Okay. Thank you for your reports. On to appointments and resignations. We have a few appointments due this evening and a couple of resignations. First up is appointment to a couple of police sergeants tonight, so you'll go get them?
Hi, guys. Come on in.
They're hiding out in the hallway. Nice. Nice turnout, chief. Very good, very good.
A lot of family involved.
Before we actually make the formal motion and the rest of that, would you like to say a few words about both of your candidates before we get forward?
Please, if I may, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, good evening, good evening, everyone. Tonight, it's my pleasure to recommend two outstanding officers for promotion to the rank of sergeant. Officer Daniel McConroy has been a member of the department since 2012. Dan is a graduate of Bristol Central High School and is currently working to complete his associate's degree in criminal justice. Dan started out with us as a dispatcher and quickly established himself as a serious employee who was destined to become a police officer. He's hardworking, and he's an excellent investigator. Dan has also demonstrated that he believes very strongly in the philosophy of community-oriented policing. Corporal Jonathan Eno has been a member of the department since 1996. Jen has held the rank of corporal since 2007. He is currently assigned to the patrol unit. Jen has an associate's degree in criminal justice from Northwestern Connecticut Community College. He's also the recipient of two Lifesave Awards. On personal note, I have asked Jen on many occasions to step up and fill the position of acting sergeant on shifts for various reasons. He's always risen to the occasion, he never once balked. He takes his role as a supervisor in the department very seriously, and Jen also believes in our initiative to police in a community-oriented fashion. The town council is very aware of how important it is to have excellent first-line supervision. I believe these two candidates possess the skills and the knowledge and the abilities to do just that. Therefore, I am recommending that the council select both of these officers to be promoted to the rank of sergeant. Thank you.
Great, thanks for your comments. Okay, can I have a motion, please?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Motion to appoint Jonathan Eno to the position of police sergeant.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Any comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Motion to appoint Daniel McConroy to the position of police sergeant.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. And Councilman Saunders, how's your badges? And are we going to do swearing-in tonight as well, or is that not part of what happens tonight? That's just a promotion?
Just the new ones.
I don't want to skip you, Carol.
No, that's fine.
All right.
Congratulations. Thank you.
They already said they were young.
These guys are two shining stars in the Plainville PD, amongst some great brothers and sisters. And on behalf of the town council, I just want to congratulate on being promoted sergeant. Do you have people you'd like to have who pin your badges on?
Yes.
Let's have them step up.
I'd like to thank Chief Catania, Town Manager Lee, and the members of the Town Council for this wonderful opportunity. I'd also like to thank my family for being very loving and supportive. I'm really excited and looking forward to serving the community in this new role. Thank you very much.
Pretty much what he just said. I'd like to thank you all of you for being here and look forward to the same. Thank you.
On behalf of the council, we say congratulations to both of you. Thank you for aspiring to be leaders with the Plainville Police Department. This is hard work. Not everybody will try to do that, and we certainly appreciate the fact that you have aspired to take on that challenge, and the very best of luck to both of you. Congratulations again.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay. It's time to go. It's time to go. Okay, we have a few more appointments to make. Okay, we have a few more appointments to make. Number two, please.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Motion to appoint Chris Centarelli, 222 West Main Street, as a probationary firefighter to the Plainville Fire Department.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Are there any comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
And one more, Madam Chair.
Yes.
Motion to accept with regret the resignation of Taylor Deegan from the Plainville Fire Department.
I have a motion in a second. Is there any discussion on the motion?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Taylor is resigning from the fire department because he moved out of town, but he's been a great asset to the Plainville Fire Department for a number of years, and I hope we can send him something in writing thanking him for his service.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Number four.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Motion to accept with regret the resignation of Keith Anderson from the Inland Wetlands Commission.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Do we have any other appointments or reappointments tonight that are not on the list? Anybody? No?
Nope.
Okay, thank you for your time. Board of Education, I don't see Mrs. Saunders here, so I will give a brief, a brief comment. I attended the high school graduation last Thursday night. It was a perfect night for the graduation. It did not rain. The parents and the graduates were very happy, and I have to say that Mr. Medick and the staff of the Plainville School System did a wonderful job organizing the event, making sure everybody was comfortable, and the graduates, of course, were just thrilled to finish up this very big milestone. There are a few big milestones in your life, and high school is one of them, and so it was a great night, and everybody is on to their next steps as to what they're going to do. So it was a great event. All right. Next, we have a report from the town attorney, reported to town manager, Mr. Lee, it's your attorney.
Thank you very much. I have several items to bring forth this evening. The first is the dog park committee. I'd like to start by saying at their meeting held on June 7th, the Dog Park Committee voted, and this is a quote, "to request that the town council approve a proposed location for a dog park at Norton Place Extension," unquote. "The proposed location of the dog park is on town-owned land, which was acquired as part of the hazardous mitigation grant program. The Parks and Rec Advisory Board has endorsed the proposed location as well. A sketch showing the proposed location was included in your meeting package information." "The committee has estimated the cost to build the dog park would be in the $25,000 to $30,000 range. They plan to raise the monies through fundraising events, donations, and direct solicitations." "Before the town council can take final action on this request, an 8-24 referral must first be made to the Planning and Zoning Commission. The 8-24 referral is for the planning and zoning to determine whether the construction of a dog park on town-owned land is in conformance with the town's plan of conservation and development. An 8-24 referral is not to determine the specific location for a dog park." "The town council wishes to move forward" The town council wishes to move forward with this recommendation. There is an item under new business that would make the 8-24 referral to the Planning and Zoning Commission. I would like to point out that there are several members of the Dog Park Committee here this evening, Chairman Dan Szyselski, Scott Adamson, and Amanda Lutowski. I'm not sure if there's anybody else. With your permission, I don't know if, uh, if, if Dan would like to make any comments at this point in time.
Dan Szyselski, 33, Overlook Drive, Chairman of the Plainville Dog Park Committee. Greetings to all of you. This evening, I believe, as, uh, Mr. Lee said, an item on your agenda, requesting that you approve the next step in going forward for Dog Park Committee, uh, Dog Park, uh, site at Norton Park Extension. The site, in a federally determined flood zone, is limited in uses, but the development of a dog park is not one of those limited uses. The site is an excellent location for a dog park, as has access to water, power, ample parking, with limited disruption to the surrounding area. The Plainville Dog Park Committee enthusiastically requests that the town council approve the proposed site at Norton Place Extension for a dog park. We estimate the cost, as Mr. Lee said, uh, for a two-acre, two-acre dog park to be approximately between $25,000 and $30,000. And confirming what Mr. Lee said, fundraising events, donations, direct solicitations will be used to help pay for the program. So I ask you to consider, uh, the Dog Park at Norton Place Extension. And also I'd like to thank Mr. Lee and his staff for the cooperation that they've given us, and we've worked together to come up with a site that we think is, is extremely, uh, important and, uh, useful for town of Plainville. So, thank you, Mr. Lee and his staff, and thank you, town council members, for, uh, considering this, uh, request.
Thank you, Dan.
Are there no questions?
No, it's Norton Place Extension. I think Norton Park Extension might have been mixed in there, but to be clear, it's Norton Place Extension, and, um, the Dog Park Committee, along with the Parks and Rec Advisory Committee unanimously, or the majority of folks, are in favor of this location, correct?
The minutes indicate that the Dog Park Committee was unanimous for those who attended the meeting.
Okay.
Uh, the advisory board, I think, did a, uh, a poll. I think, I think it was four to one. Tom Hornadus here this evening, and...
Can you confirm with the, before we go down? Right, we just, our meeting, the last meeting, was canceled until the 29th, so we wanted to make sure we had the polls, and folks saw it was, actually it was five. But I'm stationed in one.
Okay.
And there have been members of the Parks and Rec Advisory Board that have attended many, if not all, of the Dog Park Committee meetings. I know Tom's gone to a significant number of them, as well as Mr. Gettleman as well.
Okay.
Very enthusiastic participation.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I do have one quick question.
Sure.
Um, once this park is created, if we go forward with this, who, who maintains that? Is that gonna be, is that now come under the town of Plainville, and our staff grounds will maintain that property? Or will we continue to get donations to maintain that? In other words, you're gonna have to cut the grass, I think you're gonna have to maintain it, uh...
But ultimately, be the responsibility of the town.
The town. Do we have an estimated cost as to what that would be to maintain that, and...
I think it would be, I think it would be relatively minimal in terms of, you know, it would go into the rotation with regards to, uh, you know, any landscaping that would need to be done, you know, grass cutting and whatnot. I don't think it would be significant, but it would, it would have an impact.
Thank you.
Certainly, a lot depends on how it's made, you know, you know, if people take care of the amenities that are there, and then, you know, they, you know, get used. People pick up after their animals, that certainly makes it a lot easier. And it's hopeful that the Dog Park Committee will continue to, uh, you know, if, if the park is built, that they will continue to, uh, you know, kind of oversee it and, and, give some advice as well to, to making sure that people follow the rules.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
It's gonna be a lifetime event for you.
This is just for the council to speak. Well, there'll be an opportunity for others to speak later in the meeting, sir?
Thank you.
Okay. Okay.
Next item I have is the CWPM contract extension. The contract for trash and recycling collection is due to end of September. Town is currently paying CWPM $559,000 annually for this service. In February, CWPM made an offer to extend the contract for eight years for an annual amount of $513,225. This is a reduction of 8.2% or $45,775 per year. In addition, CWPM has offered to hold this price for the remaining seven years of the contract. In other words, there would be no increase to that amount. The budget that was approved by the town council and overwhelmingly approved at the all-day vote included the contract renewal rate proposed by CWPM in February. The proposal would also include continuation of the on-demand waste program with a slight increase to the current amount in, uh, in the contract by $4,000 to $32,000 per year. This amount would not increase during the length of the contract as well. Since CWPM has taken over the contract from Latella back in 2014, about three years ago, three years ago, uh, they have done a fine job and have been responsive to any issues that have occurred. Town staff is recommending that the town council extend the proposed trash and recycling contract with CWPM for eight years, detailed in their proposal dated February 9, 2017, which you have a brief, you have a copy of that. Obviously, there are some other changes that have to be made to the contract that was specific to Latella, more ministerial type of, type of items. There is an item under new business regarding this recommendation, and I would point out that Jason Manafort and Brian McCain are here this evening from CWPM. If you have any questions about their proposal or any issues dealing with, uh, the trash and recycling collection, I'm sure they would be glad to, um, to answer any questions. I don't know if you want to add anything, Jason, or...
Someone has a question, I can answer questions.
Does anybody have any questions? Any questions, concerns? No? I think that the transition, I want to make a comment, the transition between Latella no longer servicing the town of Plainville and CWPM taking on those responsibilities was fairly seamless. I think that, for the most part, the community didn't really notice much, other than the trucks are a different color, of course, and, you know, as with anything where there's a change, there are certain things that maybe overlapped or didn't happen immediately. However, I have not heard any issues with the current services that are being provided. Do you ever get calls or any kinds of concerns with that in that regard? I'm sure there's minor things where one day something didn't get picked up, but in, in the general sense, people are happy.
Yes, and, yes, we do, you know, we do get, uh, calls occasionally. Uh, you know, because CWPM is a, is a Plainville company, they certainly are very responsive and want to do a good job to the community because this is the community that they, you know, they live in, you know, and, uh, and operate out of. So, uh, I think they take a lot more pride in making sure that, uh, any issues that, that come up are taken care of, uh, you know, uh, very quickly. And, you know, by and large, to the satisfaction of people, some people cannot be satisfied because of various reasons, but, uh, that's usually within the parameters of the rules that the council has set up as far as the ordinance is concerned, the amount of bulk collection that somebody can put out of the curb, you know, things like that.
Right.
But by and large, CWPM is, uh, has been very responsive and done a very fine job.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Next item I have is the tax collector suspense list. The revenue collector has submitted a suspense list to the town council for your consideration this evening. The list is prepared per state statute, listing those taxes that the revenue collector believes to be uncollectible. The total amount being recommended is $117,152.99. Being on the suspense list does not preclude town staff from continuing their efforts to collect the taxes. However, these are accounts whereby people have either moved out of state, gone out of business, have passed away, or have otherwise disappeared and cannot be easily located, although I did find one person on the list that I thought was easily located, and I contacted that person, and, uh, I think you're gonna address that little issue. It wa, it was a wrong address, that's why they didn't get the bill, so... There are 470 accounts being recommended for the suspense list. Uh, this is an average of about $250 per account. Uh, this, this, there is an item under new business regarding the suspense list. There's no questions. The next I have is the high school track update. After several months of negotiation, a dispute resolution agreement has been executed to complete the repair of the high school track. The parties to the agreement include LaRosa Construction, Castle Booze Associates, Travelers Casualty Insurance Company of America, BSC Group, Dalton Track and Tennis, and the town Plainville. The agreement calls for LaRosa to make the necessary repairs to the track following the design proposed by Castle Booze. KBA would also provide inspection services for the repair. All parties would keep detailed records of their costs incurred. When the work has been completed, a mediation process will occur to determine what party may be responsible for the repair cost. The mediation does not settle the matter; the parties have agreed to a binding arbitration process. No additional town monies will be necessary to complete the project unless determined by the arbitrator. And we do not believe that, that the town would have any responsibility in that area, but it is left up to the arbitration process. The repair work is expected to come, to begin this week, with the substantial completion date of September 1st. No action by the town council is required at this time. I know the council has, you know, participated in some of the negotiations, so you're, you're privy to, you know, information that was done as part of, uh, the negotiation process with, with litigation, you know, potential litigation. So, we're happy that this work will get done before the football season. We're happy that it's getting done this year. If it went the litigation route, it would, it may take, it may have taken years, it certainly would have cost a lot of attorney's fees. So, the decision was made to rather pay the attorneys, let's get the track fixed, uh, so that the, uh, that the community and specifically, specifically the high school can use the track, the sports programs, and, uh, they can figure out at the end, you know, who is responsible for the, uh, for the bubbling that occurred on the track. So, we feel good about that, about that process, and, uh, and we're hopeful that it takes care of the problem once and for all. I expect that it will be. Next item I have is Valley Water Public Forum. On June 8th, a public forum was held at the middle school auditorium to discuss the results of the recent water tests that were gathered from various locations throughout the town from the Valley Water system. Forum participants included representatives from the Department of Public Health, the Public Utilities Regulatory Agency, and Valley Water. Kathy Pagliisi, Representative Bill Pettit, and I participated in the forum as well. There were approximately 40 to 45 residents who attended the forum. The bottom line is that all the water tests meet state standards for drinking purposes. However, the water is classified as very hard, which is most, which is the most likely cause for the staining, bad taste, and impact to water fixtures being experienced by many residents. Valley Water has committed to determining possible strategies for softening the water. Potential strategies could range from better balancing of the system, blending the water with other potential water sources, or installing water softening equipment at their two-well field. It is estimated that the study will take six to eight months. Valley Water has agreed to hold another forum where they will discuss the potential cost to soften the water and give their customers the opportunity to ask questions and make comments regarding the proposed solution. Valley Water is also asking their customers to contact them if they have any specific issues with the quality of their water. They will send a representative to each complaint to determine the extent of the problem and give advice on what can or cannot be done at this time. I think it was a very good forum. I think that the people who attended, uh, learned a lot about the water system, how it operates, what some of the challenges are, and, uh, what some of the potential solutions are, and were able to hear directly from those entities who oversee private water companies. Valley Water is a private water company that is running, you know, the water system for Plainville. It's not unusual to have a private water company supply water to, uh, to municipalities, uh, but it, it, they're not under the direct oversight and control of the town, they're under the direct oversight and control of the state.
I found it interesting that a lot of people thought that the town of Plainville owned the water system, and, um, because they want the town to fix it, and it's, it's clear that it's a private company that owns the water system and that we are the, we're the consumers at this end of it. There were a lot of people that were there, um, and most of those that spoke were unhappy. You know, they came because they have concerns regarding their, um, hot water heaters and the taste and some of the white, um, residue that remains on some of their dishes from using a dishwasher. So they had these issues, and, um, you know, they, they were, many of them lived in town for many years and have continually had these issues. So I think it was good for them to come and understand that the town doesn't own it, that the water company is regulated for their rates by the deep, by PURA, and that, you know, the Department of Public Health has to respond to any health-related issues in regard to any public water systems. So, the good news is the water is safe. The more difficult news is that it's extremely hard water because it comes from a well, and they have to do some work on it to see if there's any solutions they can come up with, but I think it was, um, very informative for the people that were there. Even though the solution wasn't immediate, at least they're gonna be doing something that I don't believe has ever been done before.
You know, this issue is regularly discussed on social media as well, and I know that there are people who have piped in and have made suggestions to people about what they could do with some of the various problems that people have brought up that they've had solutions with that have been effective, so I think that it's also started a conversation where people can give some advice as well as to how to handle certain...
Right.
...situations that they, that they've dealt with and have, have, uh, probably have had a positive impact, so...
Okay.
Our next item I have is a memorandum of understanding with the Metro Realty Group LLC. The Economic Development Agency is recommending that the town enter into a memorandum of understanding for a tax abatement with Metro Realty. The MOU would offer Metro a graduated tax abatement of 50% in the first full year and declining by 10% per year for the following five years. This is an average tax abatement of 38% per year. The tax abatement is for a project that has not yet been approved, but is necessary in order for them to attract potential tenants to their project. What they'd like to do is be able to say, "We have this in place," uh, in advance, a memorandum of understanding with the town, so that they can, you know, sell their project, and it's, you know, it would be, uh, up in the Northwest Drive, uh, in the Farmington, Corporate Park, on some of the remaining land that, uh, has been, you know, for sale for quite some time and hasn't really moved, so that they're trying to have a push with regards to this, uh, uh, tax abatement, uh, consideration. And again, this is something that's been discussed at the Economic Development Agency over several meetings, and, uh, their standard operating procedure is to come up with something they recommended to the town council. There is an item under new business regarding this recommendation. Next item I have is the summer meeting schedule. Proposed summer meeting schedule was brought forth at the June 5th meeting. Unless there are objections, town staff will plan the cancellation of the July 3rd, August 7th, and September 5th meetings. I haven't heard any objections over the last couple of weeks, so I figured this would be your last opportunity to, uh, to object if you certainly want to hold those...
Everybody okay with those dates?
Yes.
As far as we know at this moment in time.
Yes.
Okay. Good.
Next item I have is a school renovations project referendum. During the public comments portion of the last town council meeting held the day before the referendum, a resident remarked that the town council, quote, "might be surprised at the vote it turned out tomorrow and what the final results will be," unquote. A resident went on to state that she, quote, "talked to quite a few people that are voting no tomorrow," unquote. Another resident remarked that he did not, quote, "understand why the town council voted unanimously on this project," unquote. While a third resident proclaimed that the town council and the proposed project costs are, quote, "out of touch with reality on this one," unquote. It is now clear that the vast majority of those who voted in the referendum the next day did not share the same opinions as those that were expressed at the last town council meeting. The project was approved with 1,016 voting yes and 236 voting no. Project was approved by 81% of those voting. I would like to thank the Capital Projects Building Committee for all of their efforts over the last four years to bring forth a project that received overwhelming support by the residents of Plainville. Also want to thank the Board of Education, the Superintendent of Schools and her staff, and the parent teacher association for their support in getting people out to vote on this much-needed upgrade to Wheeler Elementary School and the pavement at the high school. The next step in the process is to file a grant application to the Department of Administrative Services. This will require the town council to approve a resolution establishing a building committee for Wheeler Elementary School and a Plainville High School projects. Copy of the resolution was included in your meeting packages. I mean, we do have a standing Capital Projects Building Committee, but as part of their process, you have to pass this specific, uh, resolution. There is an item under new business with respect to the proposed resolution, a copy of which we provided in the press meeting. The next item I have on, on my report is the financial dashboard. Would point out that a copy of that was included in your meeting packages and was posted on the town website, uh, last Friday. I can go through it quickly if you like, or... I guess the only thing that I would add to that, instead of going through each item, if you go to the second page, I spoke earlier about the unassigned fund balance, and you can see that, uh, you know, we started the year at 9.474. We expect to finish the year at 9.116 after all of the, you know, uh, if you approve what was being recommended as part of the... was being recommended as part of the public hearing. That's a difference of $358,255, which was right in that range that I said, when all is said and done, the fund balance would decrease by a little bit over $350,000 to 9.1 million dollars. And we believe that's a conservative effort estimate that it won't be any worse than that, it might be a little bit better than that. The other thing I'd like to point out is that on the third page, under the Health Insurance Fund, we've had some large claims, or a large number of claims, and that particular, you know, we're running significantly, actual to expected percentages are higher over the last couple of months, so we're going to have to keep an eye on that. And on the last page, on the major projects report, there's two changes. One is the Park Improvement Fund, we've spent some dollars, and under the road bond, we continue to spend some dollars as well. The other projects are, we have spent, we have no expenditures under the turf field project, under the Old Linden Street School demolition, under the Cook Street Reconstruction, or the phosphorus removal project. If you have any questions with regards to our national dashboard, which is posted online, I'd try to answer them for you. If not, I'd like to turn over the stuff to you for some happenings and then give out any questions you may have.
Good evening. This upcoming Monday, June 26th, will be the last bulk pickup from CWPM for the spring 2017 schedule. Bulk pickup will resume for the fall on Monday, September 11th, and run through October 30th. Eligible residents must call CWPM at 860-793-6721 to schedule pickup. When calling, you'll need to provide your name, address, phone number, and a complete description of the items to be collected. Call is placed by 3:00 p.m. on Friday, can't be scheduled for a collection on Monday. Over at the library on Wednesday, June 21st, at 6:30 p.m., to help kick off the summer reading program, they are having a magic and comedy show for the whole family with Christina the Magician. Registration will be required. On Saturday, June 20th, come learn all about bees and meet the bee lady Catherine Wolko of the Humble Bee Honey Company and learn why these creatures are so important and enjoy some bee-themed activities. This is an all-ages event. Register by stopping by at the library or giving them a phone call, 860-793-1450. This summer, the children's department will be offering an international storytime once a month at 6:30 p.m. for families with children ages three and up. That features the classic children's book, The Very Hungry Caterpillar. Ms. Erica and a guest will read this story in both English and a different language, followed by craft and food tasting inspired by the featured culture. On Monday, June 26th, the language will be Albanian, and on Monday, July 31st, they will read that book in German. The library continues the new monthly series called Great Discussions on Tuesday, June 27th. The project concerns, they'll discuss America's foreign policy through balanced, nonpartisan discussion. The series will encourage citizens to understand and participate in the foreign policy process, and that will be open to all. Over at the Senior Center, they will be discussing Title 19 on Thursday, June 22nd at 10:00 a.m. Attorney Denny from Greater Hartford Legal Aid will explain how much income you and your spouse living at home can keep and whether the home can be transferred to another family member if need be. The Bear Reality will be featured Friday, July 7th at 10:00 a.m. Alicia Ortner, a Connecticut master wildlife conservationist and a bear enthusiast, will provide education, facts about bears, and help dispel myths and common misunderstandings. This program is free and open to the public. Please call the Senior Center to register. And Advanced Directives will be held on Friday, July 14th at 10:00 a.m. Attorney Denny will be explaining healthcare instructions with power of attorney. Assistance with completing these documents will be available. Sign-up will begin on July 5th. And that is all I have to report on.
Thank you both. Does anybody have any questions or comments for either Robert or Scott with their report? Robert, I have a quick question, if I may, regarding the revenues through May 31st. If I'm reading this correctly, under all revenues on the town side, it is showing that we're $552,000 short of our budget goal. Is that due to, and it looks like our tax collections are at 100%, so would that $552,000 be a result of some grant money that we haven't received yet? And we expect to get that? Or are we not going to get it?
I don't have an answer right off the top of my head.
Rob is shaking his head, so he'll answer for you.
We got it. We already got it. It's the state grant today. And again, that report says on May 31st, but we see it like June 7th. So, it's $542,000.
But that's expected to come in before it closes?
We got it. We got it, yeah.
Okay.
Because that's a 531, and this came in in early June. This is number one.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions or concerns with their report? Okay. Thank you. We'll thank you both. We'll move on to our public comments section during this portion of our meeting. We welcome the public to come to the podium. Please state your name and address. Sir, sir, I know that you want to speak, but I have a few people that signed up. You'll get, you will be selected to come up. No worries. Okay. But I'm going to go through the list of people that signed up first. The first one is John Kislik.
John Kislik, 65 Forest Avenue. Good evening, Town Council.
Hello.
When I bring another one, I bring these up with the state of Connecticut selling bonds again. Invest in Connecticut's environment. $370 million worth of bonds state selling. That's just a little thing I wanted to bring up. Now, like usual, the town manager got to put in his digs to citizens' comments again that were referring to the Wheeler School referendum. We only had 10% of the eligible voters come out there. That's kind of sad. It's really sad. And in my opinion, majority of those thousand people who voted yes were duped. They're clueless as to what's involved in that project. There's millions of dollars of waste and unnecessary items. I don't care what the town manager says. There's things in there that shouldn't have been done, and it could have been done for millions less, given those children everything they needed. Here's another thing that kind of upset me. New Britain Hurl, saluting a town where voters share a vision that they praise Plainville for doing this. Well, now, Farmington had their vote Thursday. Up till today, nothing in the paper about 5,000 people who voted no. There is a member, and it really touched me because it happened to me as a member of the building committee, Justin. I know you remember him. He was a member of the Capital Projects Building Committee. One man found that project to be way, way out of line. The only difference is, he had 5,026 people on his side. I had 235, and that's the difference. But the Hurl's not saying anything about that, you know? Those people, and Justin is a highly educated, intelligent person. He's not a trade school construction worker, so he knows what he's talking about. Now...
Well, the scope of that was significantly different than Wheeler School, of course.
Right, right. One of the other things that bothers me, the same architect. It's like I told you before in this meeting, what it would cost if they wanted to renovate this versus our town. And there you go. That's an example, and that's the same what's happening in Wheeler, it's way out of line. My other issue is the waste contract, waste and recycling contract. Now, I have nothing against CWPM, not saying they don't do a good job. Like I talked to you before, if they can come in with this price, it should go out to bids. We don't know what somebody else would do. And Plainville has a sweetheart deal with supplying the fuel for this. That leaves a big question mark out of any bidding for contractors. They don't have to worry about increases of fuel. There's so many different things, like I said, they were not the original bidders. They stepped in on one. The cans are paid for, and it looks, again, one of these same deals like other people talk about, 6-0, already figured out and planned behind closed doors. I find it unusual that all six of you would vote yes on this. I think we can still send it to bid. If CWPM comes in low bid for an eight-year contract, well, then they have it. We need transparency. You don't know what's going to happen. When Waste Material Trucking was negotiating with the town manager behind closed doors, I was at the meeting, and he said, he said, "Your town manager is a tough negotiator. He's real tough." Everybody's laughing. Well, Waste Material Trucking came in last in the bidding out of five contractors, okay? So, how do we know what could happen if we send this out to bid? And you should. I'm telling you, I think we can save some money on it, and if the CWPM wins the contract, they win the contract. Keep it upfront and keep it out there. Be transparent. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody else wish to speak to the council?
Yeah, I'm on the list.
Oh, sorry, Joanne, you're on the list, along with Roberta Loria. Joanne, Roberta's...
Does she come first?
She's next. Roberta?
Okay, all right.
Sorry.
Sorry. Roberta Loria, 18 Perrin Road. Thank you so much for giving me the opportunity to talk this morning. I appreciate the time. On June 5th, there was a presentation done by C R C O G. Three individuals were there, Tim Malone, Teresa Carr, and Mark Jewell, and they did a great job giving a presentation of four choices here in Plainville that they want to use for the trails. I'm here requesting your assistance on one of them, that being Perrin Road where I live. We're a narrow street. We're smaller. We don't have sidewalks that go all the way down. We have limited street lighting, and we, as residents, paid more to live on this dead-end street, knowing that the biggest worry we would have were coyotes and bears. We're a very family-oriented street. We know who our neighbors are. Parents don't worry about their children playing outside or just running down the street to see their friends. I have serious concern about having Perrin Road open up to trails. Mr. Jewell mentioned that there are a certain number of houses on this street that could have an impact. What he didn't talk about were the families in those homes and how it impacts us. No one ever sent me a letter about this program. No one ever called me, and no one ever knocked on my door about this, and yet this has a chance of impacting me and my family. Earlier this year, two girls were murdered in Indiana on a trail. Just this week, there was a girl that was approached in Lebanon that the police are still investigating about. And just yesterday, when I went to leave to go to Walmart last night, many people were not in their homes. They were visiting families for Father's Day. By the way, those that are pleased too, Happy Father's Day, gentlemen. I watched a man slowly drive up and down our street on a bicycle, looking at all the houses. I sat in my driveway watching him. As he was coming up and when he realized I was watching him, he picked up the pace, proceeded back down Perrin Road, and went down Johnson Avenue toward the airport. That concerns me. So, I'm here asking for your help, helping C R C O G to take Perrin Road off the list. We're just not a street that can handle this kind of traffic or the repercussions that could go with this. Thank you very much for your time and patience.
Thank you. Joanne Edman?
Yep.
Joanne Edman, 166 West Main Street. The prayer should never get said at the beginning, we will do now. Oh dear God, our heavenly Father, please grant our town council the wisdom, knowledge, strength, and courage to perform their elected duties and responsibilities to the citizens and charter of Plainville. Amen. And boy, what an amen it is. We do have problems here in Plainville. I knew there'd be a few problems with this trail. You wait and see, it's going to be imminent to Maine. We've got trouble, trouble, right here in River City. And a list of them is, has already hap, the problems have already happened. You've got a mess over at Old Linden Site. It's a wasteland. You have the bubbling track, which I don't know how that's going to get resolved. This trail is a problem. You've got hi, oh, I am so happy Farmington saw the light. Oh, they're not buying that big, high-priced BOE baloney. They said no, and I wish some of our people had said no to renovate like new. If it's broke, fix it, but you don't have to do everything over. And the architects do go in and they do what they want. Of course, they get more money, I'm sure. The more you spend, the more money they get. So, anyway, but I'm here tonight not because of all the problems, all the high cost of our projects and so on and so forth. Putting that aside, that's for another day. What I want to talk about tonight is that, gee, somebody's got to be the animal advocate. This past couple of weeks, maybe longer than that, and I don't know how many cases, but there have been people, nitwits, dumbbells, whatever you want to call them. I've got a list of names, but I'm going to be kind and not say what I really like to call them, that have, are starting to leave their dogs in cars with windows rolled up. Now, that cannot go on. A couple of them have been caught and reprimanded, but I would like to see a law where anybody that leaves a dog or any animal sitting in a hot car with the windows, and those cars get really hot, real quick. I would like to see that person, when they're caught, sit in a car, and maybe, maybe, people will start paying more attention. This is summer now. It gets brutally hot. You can't leave an animal in the car without any air conditioning. It's insane, and there's a lot of animal cruelty going on besides that, and it's got to stop. And Donna Weinhofer is doing a great job. She's in her staff. She's doing as much as she can. She comes right away and takes care of the situation, and it's up to everyone to be, as I said before, ever vigilant. You must, if you hear something, if you see something, for heaven's sakes, say something. Go after the people yourself if you can't get the police there fast enough. They've got other things they're doing, too. You might not get one there. Yeah, hang on, Kathy. This is important. Hang, no, everybody had their time. I'm the only one that you have interrupted, please. Please, Kathy, this is a very important subject. See, you know, that's very nice. You know, you're so nice to me. You know, you really are so nice to me. You picked me out, and this is just not fair, Kathy.
Joanne?
You know, Kathy, Kathy, this is not fair. It's not fair.
There's others that would like to have a word.
It's not fair.
Okay. I apologize. Could you please continue and wrap it up for 15 seconds?
Yeah. Well, I was in the process of wrapping it up until you had to interrupt me, so you had to hear about it. Three minutes is not long enough, and you do let some people go on and on and on. So, I know, you know, when they want to come up and dribble slurp, like I've said before, you know what happens. You know what happens. You know what happens. All right, I've said what I wanted to say here tonight.
The gentleman in the back wants to speak.
My name is Michael Twill. I live at 36 Robert Street. Been there for about six years now. My wife and I put together a three-point kind of rebuttal to why we feel that a dog park is not a smart proposal for our area. Many of our neighbors feel the same, and I'm here today to kind of voice the concerns that I have brought up several times, and many of my neighbors feel the same way. Number one, we don't feel it's the most safe thing for the people who actually live in that area. Their livelihood, their safety, their well-being is the most important thing. I have a son who's seven and a son who's three. You need to consider some more things before you go forward with this project. People who are on the committee have been very gracious to hear my concerns and have been very nice to listen to those, so I appreciate that as well. It's heavier traffic. People fly down that street from the top, from the very beginning. You've always needed a stop sign there. Now, this is going to make that even more of a reason for a stop sign. People do not respect the traffic laws on that street, and it's gonna get worse with more traffic, more people coming up and down. Run off from the park. Our property at 36 sits the majority inside the inland wetland protection area. A few years ago, I forget the exact timeline, I had to get an approval to do a bunch of different things to my house, which is new construction on the street, which, fine, we went through the process, but any proposal for anything else on the street which could run off into the same wetland area needs to go through the same vetting, the same rigor that we've gone through so that we as human beings can live on the property. This is a dog park. It needs to go through the same rigor that it does not, not only impact the wetland area the same way that we would, but also it does not, more importantly, impact the people who live on the street. Two main point, which I just went over, we don't feel it's a safe place. There's been cougar sightings on the street. This winter, I took a picture of cougar tracks following the edge of my property. There's been a mother bear with four cubs sighted in the area, going up and down the corridor, which the dog park would be part of in terms of wildlife. That mother bear has four cubs. Young bears, as they get older, do not obey our human rules. That presents a safety issue mostly for children and dogs, because when bears who are young and hungry predate on things, when they're hungry, they go after less able beings to protect themselves, children and dogs. So we feel that it's a safety issue for those reasons. And parking. Still haven't heard exactly where parking is going to be, but if parking is going to be along Robert Street, that would pose an issue. If parking is going to be in that old circle where Norton Place Extension is, obviously that's all some things. So I'm not opposed if it's done correctly, but I am opposed that if it's not done correctly and it impacts us in adverse ways who live on the street, we actually live there and we pay taxes, then it shouldn't be on the street at all. And so that's my main point. I appreciate your time. I appreciate your point early in the meeting in terms of the impact of what the cost is to maintain it. I would not support that either if it's not done correctly. And also, if it jacks up any portion of what I have to pay to live here already. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Does anybody else wish to speak to the council? Yes, sir.
Hi, my name is Amanda Brier. I live at 152 Camp Street. I am a member of the Dog Park Committee. We have heard many concerns of the Norton Place Extension, and I did want to mention something that Robert and the council had pointed out. I have a million ideas for fundraising. I am a dog rumor. I've been in the business for 17 years. A lot of the ideas I have for fundraising would be annual things that we would do every year to continue to bring in money for the dog park, for the maintenance, for the fencing, any repairs that may mean to happen. So that was all I wanted to say.
Thank you. Next up.
All right, Jason Mail, CWPM, 25 Norton Place. I don't live there, but some days I think I do. I just wanted to correct a couple of things that were said earlier regarding the waste in our recycling contract. It was mentioned that the carts were paid for after six years. They're not. If you recall, the original contract, Elatella, the reason they were so cheap in the beginning is they took that cart cost and spread it over 10 years, not six. And the reason they did that, because the current contract is really a 10-year contract. It's six, and then there's an option years that need to be approved. And granted, they're an option, but the way he did the math on that contract was a 10-year deal. And I think it was assumed that, being that it was cheaper, substantially cheaper. And it was correct that we did assume that contract. So for the option years for four, which I'll call years seven through 10, we offered to keep the price the same as the current contract. And then from years 11 to, excuse me, would be from years seven through 10, and then the four years after that, we added on an additional year when the carts were paid off, and then we took that savings and then averaged it into the whole eight, which brought the whole cost down. So that was our proposal. And so what was said earlier was not correct. And also, the, what I'd like to say is that that company there, that we did assume the contract from is no longer in business. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody else wish to speak to the council? You can come up, sir. No, can you just wait?
Brian Ruat, 24th and 11th. Two questions. Webster Street, it's been paved for a while. Stop signs are up. Awkward spot, but I understand why it's there at the intersection. When's it been striped or lined? That hasn't been done yet. Second observation is-
Webster's hasn't been striped?
It's not striped. The marks are there for it. There's no stop bars at the stop signs. The second observation I made to Maureen Brummett, the superintendent of the board, it's just that an observation was the schools had their biggest time of year this year, June. They were unkept. You walked in, there was grass not cut. There was weeds that weren't done. The schools just looked unkept. This is basically their most important time of the year besides September. You go in, you aren't looking clean. You graduate, you have ceremonies, you have field days, different things like that. And ultimately, that falls down on Mr. Lee's shoulders. Any comments?
Yeah, we can look into it. The grounds are maintained by the town. So without having specific dates and when they were done and not done, I couldn't, I don't know if you have an answer. We could find out if you'd like to comment further.
Couple items. One is that with regards to the Webster Street, we are putting, you know, we're putting a list together. It's, we don't bring a contractor in for one street. We're trying to do, to put something together. These line striping people aren't the easiest people to work with in terms of scheduling things, so the plan is to get it done as soon as possible, but Webster Street is on a list. With regards to the maintenance of the school facilities, we work hand-in-hand with the school principals and their staff. If they feel that we're not holding up our end of the bargain, so to speak, the phone rings. The phone did not ring for us. So, you know, I know that we're stretched thin. I know that this year was a tremendous amount of rain that we've gotten during the springtime. Things are growing a lot more than they have in previous years, you know, and, you know, it is a lot of things that we need to do. We try to keep the fires-
I mean, obviously, if they can mow it and go around a light pole, why can't you trim it? You were just there. You put the mower down, you shut it off, you string trim it, you move on to the next one. I know one of the members of the board was at the same family picnic I was at and saw the school just the way I did. I mean, and that's with a council member here. I mean, I would think June and June and September would be your two most important times. I just think it looks shabby, doesn't look well-kept. If this is one school, what do the other schools in town look like? Besides the high school, that's probably all prim and proper for graduation.
You asked for an explanation. I gave you an explanation. You're not happy with that, obviously.
Well, I just think that the smaller schools should, besides the flagship school that everybody looks at the high school as, your smaller schools should be taken just as well of care of, if not better.
Madam Chair, I have one comment that might apply to it. I know that you're not allowed to use pesticides on elementary schools and those kinds of things, so that might be, you know, part of the problem as far as weeds growing in the islands that are stoned. I did notice some of that. That definitely makes it a little harder.
That has made the job over the last several years very labor-intensive. And we have, we hire, we hire temporary help during the summertime. In the past, we've used college kids. There were, we hire four temporary for buildings and grounds. Only two college kids were available, so we had to wait till school was up before we could hire the two high school kids. So there's, they do a lot of that, you know, that type of work. So it's a combination of factors. I can tell you that, not to diminish it, but yours is the only complaint we've had about the condition of the schools. Not diminishing, and I'm just saying that if, you know, if we, you know, if we receive a lot of feedback from the school personnel, you know, there may have been an opportunity for us to do something about it, but, you know, tried to give you an explanation.
All right, no, that's fine. I mean, it just, Danny will agree, it just didn't look like it should have for field day or the family picnic. So.
Well, we, I'm not even sure we were aware that it was a family picnic day. You know, maybe there needs to be a little bit better communication with respect to that. I mean, you know, but, you know, it's not easy to keep up with all the things that we need to do. We don't have a lot of extra staffs sitting around waiting for something to get done. We had a hard time hiring some part-time help, you know, that we would normally have at this time of year.
As far as pesticides, there are environmentally friendly versions of them. So if you can't put down the chemical, the harsh versions, there's always a-
Looked at all of these things, believe me. They don't work the way they're supposed to work.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Does anybody else wish to speak to the council? Mr. Frangos?
Mr. Frangos, 10 Fairbanks Street. Before I get into mine, could I just say something really quick from a resident's standpoint to the gentleman? Is he still here?
Not yet.
Okay. The only thing I was going to say is, and I'm referencing back there during the winter when the snow was falling and everything else, I'm assuming that Department of Public Works takes care of the mowing and all that. And I've always had the greatest cooperation with these people when I've spotted something. And I said, "Daniel, we have a problem here if you don't," and I try to get it cleaned up there before you have to progress to the next step. And 99/10ths of the time, it's taken care of. That's all I was gonna add to that. What I, my public comments, my public comments were, the first thing is, I just want a little clarity, talking about, the town manager talked about the track up, the, at the tail end, I don't know if I heard it correctly, there may be a point where the town may have to pick up the tab after litigation. Did I understand that correctly?
We can answer.
Please.
We're talking about arbitration, not litigation. There'll be an arbitrator that will determine who's responsible for the defects in the track and determine who will pay that cost. There is a remote possibility that he may find that the town's partially responsible for it. We think that's a remote possibility, and I would not want to speculate at this point in time, you know, whether that's, whether that would be a reality or not. We don't anticipate it's going to be.
Okay, my only question was, there's a potential, I understand there's a potential it may happen. I'm not saying it's going to happen. And the way it's been here and said now, it may be partially laid on the town. That's all I asked. Okay. Number two, we're talking about the wheel of school, and if I still understand this correctly, we're looking for the money coming from the state. If we don't receive the full amount from the state, the project's dead in the water. Now, with that said, have we heard any update from our state representative on where we stand, along with other towns, on getting the reimbursement from the state? And the reason I addressed this directly to the town council is because in prior discussions regarding our state representative, town council members have said we have talked directly to him on subjects and related subjects. So I'm wondering, has any recent news come out regarding the state paying the towns for projects?
Well, I'm gonna try to answer that, and then Robert Lee is going to fill in the blanks, if you will. The funding for the school is going to go through a bonding commission meeting, is that right? That'll be part of a large bonding package? I don't believe that's occurred yet. Has it?
No. I mean, we have to make application by June 30th. They take all the applications that come in, they go through a review process, and then they appropriate the dollars through the bond commission. The state has assured us that the money would be there. The state officials have assured us that the money would be there. They've said nothing to the contrary to date. I know that Mr. Frangos asks at every meeting whether we've heard anything new. So we make the application process and wait to hear from the state. We just ask that you be patient. We have heard nothing new.
That's all I, that was my only question. Remember, I'm a slow learner. And all I know is broken down in half, and half of that, or well, not half, but the percentage is, doesn't go anywhere unless we get the state funding. And poor Mr. Liu does not understand it till he sees it coming in the door.
Well, there's the process, as Robert said, that we have to do things, the state has to have a bonding commission meeting, we have to get on the agenda, and we have to be part of the funding that the state is gonna approve for projects such as that. So that has not happened yet.
You'll be the second person to appear if they turn us down as far as the grants is concerned. You'll be right after the council.
Okay, where am I now?
That's your number.
Okay, number three is, I have an update on the memorial, Old Linden Street School Memorial Park.
I haven't, the committee hasn't met in a little while.
They met on Friday.
Did they?
They met on Friday.
On Friday?
The sidewalks are being worked on right now. The fence will go up after that. The Linden Street School sign will go up on the corner. The sundial will be installed after the fence is installed. I know that they've been having some discussions with the school people about the potential gazebo. We're still talking about the location of the bell, you know, so we wanted to wait till school was out before we began to move forward. And school is out, so it's begun.
Perfect, thank you. And the final, I caught this, I came into the meeting, I caught the tail end of the chief speaking, you're talking about stop signs in roads, and you can relate to this. Madam Chair, I live on the corner of Fairbanks and Bohemia Street, and this time of year, Bohemia Street turns into a quarter-mile racetrack. And I mean a quarter-mile racetrack. Now, one side has sidewalks, my side, all the way down Bohemia Street, does not. The reason I bring that up, if somebody were to lose control of a car, the first place that car is going into somebody's house.
Happened to me, almost.
One of mine would be my house. But my question was, and I brought this up last year, is there any possibility that we, and I think it was done on your street, Madam Chair, could they just for a while put up these speed bumps? The portable speed bumps?
On Bohemia?
Yes. Just to see what would happen.
Well, it's another process.
There's a process that we go through. It involves the, you know, the people who live on the street. It wouldn't be just as a result of, you know, one person's, you know, getting up at a council meeting. It would be looked at on a case-by-case basis, and there's a process that we go through. So if you want to, you know, so that's something that the neighborhood would like us to consider. The neighborhood, you know, usually takes an organizer in the neighborhood to discuss that.
There you go, Lo.
We would do some traffic, we would do some traffic analysis. That quarter of a mile is about an eighth of a mile, number one. Number two is that- Number two is that, you know, we'd have to take a look at the volumes and the speeds and determine whether it would be appropriate for something along those lines. Our local traffic authority and, and we follow a certain process, and, you know, so it could lead to something like that, it could lead to, you know, other considerations.
Okay. And just to clear the air, Madam Chair, the only reason I brought up your street was because...
Not my street.
Well, the street you live on is because it was the first time I ever saw portable road bumps. That was the only reason. And the next meeting, I'll bring three or four of my neighbors with me, and maybe we can make this thing move faster.
Honestly, that is how it happened on West Broad Street, is a group of people got together, some of them came to the town manager and said, these are concerns we have. The town manager arranged a neighborhood meeting where the chief came, police officer came, Robert Lee was there, and there was several people that came to that stand-up meeting. It was in the summertime, everybody was there. People from Bristol came, said, I don't want you doing anything on the street. They don't live there. But they didn't want anything done because they like to drive down that street. So, you know, you get a real sense of what people want to have, and not just on the street, but any of the streets that feed into it. So it was an interesting experience.
I would like to clarify this to Mr. Frankos. This is not a political decision. This is an administrative process. I would recommend that, you certainly could bring people to a council meeting. It really is not a council decision, it's really a local traffic authority decision. And I would recommend that if you have neighbors who want to have this discussion, it be held with administration. If you're not, certainly if you're not happy with the, the process that we, you know, to go through as far as administration is concerned, you could always go to the council, but it's not a political decision.
Okay.
Well, we've had people from West Broad come to the council too and voice their concern during that, so.
No, I'm not saying they can't. I'm just saying that...
Yeah. Ultimately, it ends up somewhere, and it's us.
And just in concluding, if I get some of our neighbors up the street, Mr. Lee will be the first one that gets the call.
Hey, does anybody else wish to speak? Mr. Lalama?
Yes. Carmine Lalama, 37 Bohemia Street. To answer Lou's question as far as the Linden Street project, we met last, last Friday. Until the sidewalks and the fence and everything is set, after that, we'll go in there and then they'll decide where the things are going to be placed and what's going to go in. So until then, there's nothing that could be done about it. Thank you.
Thank you for that update.
Oh, the grass, West West.
Marilyn?
The grass looks awful.
Marilyn Scherr, 18 Milford Street. Good evening, council members.
Hello.
And members of the community and taxpayers. I'm here for, speaking for John Kissler, because he can't get up a second time. And he wanted me to say, there was no addendum to the original trash contract saying barrels were paid for over ten years. Thank you.
Does anybody else wish to speak to the council? Oh, yes, sir.
David Spencer, 127 Milford Street Extension. First off, I'd like to just comment that I think it's, to me, expressing a little humility in victory is a far more admirable trait than gloating. I do have a question. On the morning of the referendum, I passed Linden School, and there were people positioned there on school property at the entranceway as parents were dropping off their children, and they were holding up those professionally manufactured signs, which, you know, it's hard to find out who's taking credit for actually paying for them. I mean, I believe in the First Amendment, but this was on school property, and I believe if I had a cause in a sign, I don't think I could just walk up to the school and stand there in the morning as parents dropped off their children. So I'm wondering, who gave these people permission to be politicking parents in that position of dropping off their children on the morning of the referendum? I mean, I don't think they were, they just came up and did it. I mean, that is school property, that's...
Were they on the school property or on the sidewalk?
Yeah, they were right by the door at Linden School, holding up their signs as, as parents dropped off their children. I mean, did they, I mean, there are administrators in the school, and they weren't coming out and saying, well, you know, you're not supposed to be here. So somebody had to give them permission to be there. Who gave them permission to do something like that?
We'd have to ask that question. I know that during political season, we have to stay with, outside of seventy-five feet of the polling location, but there's plenty of people with political signs near schools, so I'm not sure.
So I mean, if I had a cause in a sign, I could just walk up to Linden School and stand there in the morning and show it to the...
I can't answer that for you, Mr. Spencer. We could ask if there was permission granted for that. We could ask that.
Could we? Could we find an answer for that?
I'll do that for you.
I'd appreciate that.
I will have the answer for you at our next meeting, which unfortunately isn't until mid-July, but I can get in touch with you other ways, so I can find out. This was at Linden Street School, not at Wheeler School.
Well, I didn't, I didn't police all the schools, but they were there at Linden.
It was Linden that you are speaking of.
You know, nine o'clock in the morning, they're standing there with their signs.
I'll find out.
On the, on the property, right by the entrance.
Yep, I'll find out.
Thank you.
Sure. Does anybody else wish to speak that hasn't spoken yet? Anybody else? Okay. Thank you for your comments. We'll close this section. We do not have any old business, so we are going to move into our new business section of our meeting. I'll just get my motions out here, folks, before we get started. Madam Chair? We have a lot of them.
Yep.
Yes.
Motion to adopt an ordinance entitled, "Ordinance Establishing Fourth Quarter Transfers for Fiscal Year Ending June 30, 2017."
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Are there any comments on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Number two, who wants to do that long one?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Motion to appropriate $574,570 from account 01000003211000000, unassigned fund balance to Police 01002015114000, overtime $225,000. Roadways 0100305411400, overtime $40,000. Roadways... What?
Yeah, we should skip the numbers.
Okay, really? Okay, thank you. Thank you. Roadways, snow removal $28,000. Roadways, rental, snow removal $21,000. Buildings and grounds, overtime $11,000. Buildings and grounds, snow removal $7,500. Transfer outs, town capital $147,070, and transfer out landfill closure $95,000.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Any comments on that extensive motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Number three.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
A motion to send the development of a dog park on town property to the Planning and Zoning Commission for an 8-24 referral.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Are there any comments on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Motion to approve and authorize the town manager to execute the extension of the Agreement for Residential Curbside Municipal Solid Waste and Recycling Collection with CWPM for a period of eight years with firm annual costs of $513,225 per year for solid waste and recycling collection and $32,000 per year for bulky waste collection.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Is there any discussion on the motion?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I would just like to say, I think CWPM has done a great job picking up this contract when the previous hauler went out of business. I think holding the rate firm for eight years and covering the cost of the barrels is a great service to our town, and I will definitely be supporting this.
Does anybody else have anything? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Number five?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Motion to approve the tax collector's suspense list.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Motion to waive the bid process and award bid number 2017-21 Traffic Calming Devices to Traffic Logics of Spring Valley, New York in the amount of $20,160.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Is there any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Number seven?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Motion to approve and authorize the town manager to execute the memorandum of understanding with Metro Realty Group, LTD, as recommended by the Economic Development Agency.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any discussion on the motion?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I'd like to share that I did attend the meeting of the economic development, and this certain piece of property on Northwest Drive is actually in an aquifer protection.
Oh.
And the Metro Realty, one of the representatives stated that they've had very, very few calls, maybe, he said, one to three calls a year for the last ten years that they own the piece of property. So in this situation, if they can retain a tenant that is currently in one of their other units that they own across the street, they might be able to tie them in for another ten years, which would be a really good thing for Towne Blaineville, in my opinion. And they also stated that, you know, they are looking at other locations closer to the airport and that kind of thing. And as far as the aquifer protection, they actually meet the standards of what you can do there, so that'd be, you know, beneficial.
There's a huge aquifer down in that area. Massive. So thanks for that information. Okay, any other comments?
Madam Chair, you know, I read through all the paperwork on that, on this proposal, and I support it as well. It sounds like it's a win-win for everybody, and we'll keep that business in town, hopefully.
Indeed.
And growing, yeah.
Any other comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Number eight?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Motion to approve payment of $125,000 from the Self-Insurance Fund to Peter Costanzo in his full and final settlement of his heart and hypertension claim.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Madam Chair?
Number nine?
Motion to adopt a resolution entitled, "Resolution Establishing a Building Committee for Wheeler Elementary School and Plaineville High School Projects."
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Any discussion on the motion?